Hello. Just gonna give it a couple of minutes, see if anybody else joins. Okay. What are you doing, dog? Come here. Stop being naughty, Neo. Okay. Is there any particular place you'd like to start?
And I already did number one, and I was just gonna follow along as we did the homework here.
Okay. Hold on. My, my dog is just ridiculous. Yeah. Hi. Why don't you go lay down on your bed and stop causing trouble? Are you gonna join me? I don't even know if I can get you on the camera. There you go. Say hi, Neo. Okay. All right. So, number two. So we have an alkene and we're doing acid catalyzed, but with an alcohol instead of water. So what's gonna happen is that we lose one H and instead we add OCH3 instead of OH. So we'll have our three carbons from our alkene. And whenever we have acid catalyzed, we go through a cation. So the positive charge intermediate would be on this carbon. And then on the next step, the alcohol would add. So then the negative, the positive charge would go away. We would end, on the next step, we would have OCH3. And it would be a positive oxygen. And on the final step of the mechanism, we would deprotonate that oxygen to give the ether. So the final answer should be this three-carbon ether. As long as I'm using the right alcohol, yes. So basically, we're adding the OCH3 from the alcohol at the more substituted carbon from Markovnikov addition. Okay, so we're on number two, part B. We have another alkene. So this is a 2-pentene. And we're doing halogenation. And this is gonna be di-halogenation because they don't specify a solvent. So we have the anti-addition of bromine. This is gonna add with a specific orientation. We have five-carbon chain. And we are going to add, initially, what happens? So the double bond is here. Okay. So initially, the double bond is between C2 and C3. And we make, in the first step of the reaction, our three-carbon ring with bromine. Then on the next step of the mechanism, another bromide ion adds. And when it adds, it breaks this bond. We get a neutral charge. And they have to be on opposite sides of the molecule, so they have to be anti. But I don't know if this problem is that specific. Because sometimes they just want the general molecule, and sometimes they want all possible molecules. So do they specify all stereosomers? It doesn't look like it. It just is the major product. So it should accept this as a correct answer. Yes. Okay.
What number is that one?
Number two B. I just thought of something. This one. And then open the notes. Did you close all my presentations earlier without saving them? That's irritating. There it is.
I'm still having a hard time finding it. I don't think it's the same numbering.
Item two. Part B. The assignments are identical between the two courses, so it should be there. All right. So item two, part C. We have a hydroboration. So we've got R2BHTHF, followed by hydroxide, peroxide, and H2O. So that's a hydroboration. And that's the one that has the anti-Markovnikov addition. And if you refer to the reaction diagram, it adds an alcohol group. And it adds an anti-Markovnikov. So we have a carbon with, that's tertiary, and a carbon that's primary. And so, since it adds anti-Markovnikov, the alcohol group will add to the terminal CH2. So you need six-membered ring. And that has a carbon group that has an alcohol group on the carbon that is off of the ring. And then that should be an acceptable answer. Yeah. Did I accidentally put an extra water in the window? Yeah, it was just the extra water. What are you tearing up, Neo? I'm not gonna worry about it. I hear the ripping noises. So naughty. Oh, this is like the first one. Okay, so if we go back and refer to this alkene, H2SO4, and CH3OH, and we added in ether group to the more substituted carbon of the double bond. And here we have another double bond, and we have H2SO4 and CH3. So I know I'm gonna add OCH3 to the more substituted carbon, which would be the carbon with the methyl group. So on that same carbon, I'll put oxygen with a carbon. How do you guys feel about this? Am I going too fast, or are you following okay? And these reactions where you have H2SO4 and an alcohol are over here on the slide where it says ROH and H2SO4 gives us an OR group added. So HBR addition, we add hydrogen to one, to the less substituted carbon, and a bromine to the more substituted carbon. So what we can do, because it's the same starting material, you can select the previous picture and copy it using the Ctrl-C if you have Windows and Apple Key C, I think it is, is the command for copying. And you can actually paste it into the new window. And then we can erase this and replace the hydroxyl group with a bromine and get the final answer. So we add bromine to the more substituted carbon and hydrogen to the less substituted carbon. And I, the reason that I did it that way is just to show you that you can copy from one drawing to the next. You can copy the picture and put it, paste it into another window on the same problem, or even on the next problem if the products are similar. And that can sometimes save you time in drawing. Okay. We have an ROH, so an alcohol, and H2SO4. And according to our diagram, that will give us addition of the OR group. So all we need to do is to put cyclohexane in there. And then put an OR group that has the same number of carbons, so three carbons and one oxygen. Put my oxygen, then one, two, three carbons. Okay. He could sleep all day and be the sweetest dog all day, but the second I started Zoom meeting, he goes insane. So the following product was obtained from the ozonolysis of an alkene, followed by treatment with dimethyl sulfide. What is the structure of the alkene? So originally, the two carbons, so I can actually annotate. So originally, this carbon was bonded to this carbon. Can't necessarily draw well when I annotate. Need to use my pen. So these two carbons were bonded together. So what we can do is count how big the ring would have been if those two carbons are bonded together. So it would have one, two, three, four, five, six atoms in the ring. So it's a six-membered ring with a methyl group at carbon one. Like this. And then it would have had a double bond between carbon one and two. So these six carbons, because carbon one and carbon six were bonded together, was a ring, and then there was a methyl group coming off of the ring. No, you can't go outside. You're digging holes in the lawn tonight. Nope. You're just gonna have to wait. We'll go for a walk later. Okay, the following products were obtained from oxidative cleavage of a dian. What is the structure of the dian? So in this case, we had two double bonds. And the double bonds were, say, this is carbon one. Because it's, if I connect this to the end of the dicarbonil, then that double bond would have been the closest to the end of the chain. So think of that as being carbon one of the dian. Then we can count carbon two, carbon three, carbon four, carbon five, carbon six, seven, eight, nine. So it would have had to come from a dian that had a double bond between carbon one and two. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And also another double bond between seven and six. And that would have given those two products because it would cut the double bond here and here, giving us carbons two through six with two carbono groups at the end. And then the seven, eight, nine group and the carbon one group. So what we need to do then is to draw our seven-carbon di- dian, or nine-carbon dian. With the double bond between carbon one and two and six and seven. What alkene would give a ketone with three carbons as a product of oxidative cleavage? So a ketone with three carbons is the only product. That means that the alkene has to be symmetric. So that you only get one three-carbon ketone as the product. So if you draw two molecules of a three-carbon ketone and then align them like that. And we work backwards by erasing the oxygen atom and then connecting the two carbons with a double bond. Then we would have our reactant that gives, when we erase the middle of the double bond and put two oxygens, two, three-carbon ketones that are identical. And since they're identical, they're the same thing, and it's only one three-carbon product.
How were you able to make the double bond longer than a normal double bond?
Um, I clicked in the window and then without releasing, I just dragged it. I dragged my mouse down until I got to the other carbon and connected it. And once it was touching the other carbon, I released my click.
Okay.
All right. What did I miss? You haven't finished this item. What have I not finished? I know, but it won't let me go down anymore. What's wrong with my window? There. Let me just go back. Okay. Problem four. There it is. What alkene would only give an aldehyde with four carbons as a product of oxidative cleavage? So if it's an aldehyde of four carbons, then it's a straight-chain alkene with a total of eight carbons and a double bond between carbons four and five. So that when I cut, if I were to cut this double bond, I would have one, two, three, four, and one, two, three, four. And aldehydes are when we have Nope, that didn't work. Hey. How do I, oh yeah, Zoom. Now I have all this extra stuff in the window. I just have to go back, go back, go back, go back, go back, go back. Can't see. Did it erase everything? It did, right?
Yeah, I don't like it when it zooms all the way out, and it's like really tiny. Can't see anymore.
I'm just gonna assume that the window is empty and all right, so we would have, you could do it this way, too. We could draw the alkene, or we could draw the four-carbon aldehyde first and two molecules of it. Then when we align the two oxygens and erase them, we can connect those two carbons with a double bond. And you'll see that you get an eight-carbon alkene, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yep. Okay. Two propyl oxyrene. What alkene would you treat with a peroxide to obtain the following products? So going from an epoxy back to the alkene is probably one of the easier problems to solve. We would put a double bond in the same position as the three-carbon, as the three-membered ring, and simply get rid of the oxygen. So that would be, it looks like five carbons, one, two, three, four, five, with a double bond between carbons one and two. Okay. Then the same thing for this six-membered ring, replace the bonds to oxygen with a double bond between the two carbons. Not two rings. Okay. And then four carbons, methyl, methyl, double bond. One, one, two, three, four, five is the longest carbon chain. And there's a methyl group at carbon two and a double bond. Okay. So hopefully those ones seem pretty straightforward to you guys. Going from an epoxy back to the starting alkene. Dogs. Okay. Draw the product form when the compound shown below undergoes a reaction with Br2 and H2O. Okay? So we refer to our diagram over here. When we have Br2 and H2O, we make a halo hydrin. So we add OH and bromine. And this occurs in a Markovnikov way where the alcohol group, which is a higher priority for naming, goes to the more substituted carbon. And that means that we have let's see. Tertiary carbon. Oh, come on. My mark, my pen's not working very well. And a secondary carbon. So bromine is gonna go here. And OH is gonna go to this more substituted carbon. Let's see, does it say anything about sterile chemistry? It does not. So we don't have to worry about that. We have, let's see. Four carbons. The methyl group here. I'm gonna add second methyl group, which I'll replace with oxygen. And I'm gonna have a bromine group over here. So now I can just overwrite those methyl groups with the correct atom. Oh, not that one. Bromine. And that will be our final product. So we've put a hydroxyl group on the more substituted carbon and a bromine on the less substituted carbon.
Because that hydroxyl has the higher priority?
Yes. Also because that's the nucleophile in the second step of the mechanism. So the electrophile ended up on the less substituted carbon and the nucleophile on the more substituted carbon. That's right, Markovnikov addition takes place to put the OH group on the more substituted carbon. And bromine on the less substituted. Well, I'm glad that they agree with me and my explanation of the problem. Okay. Did we do all parts of that one? Was it just the A? Yeah, okay. What is the product of the addition of ICL to one butene? Chlorine is more electronegative than iodine. Alright, so which one is more nucleophilic, iodine or chlorine? It depends on the acid strength, right? So you have to consider hydroiodic acid versus hydrochloric acid. Okay. So, and the more electronegative atom is going to be less electrophilic. So chlorine is both more nucleophilic and less electrophilic. That means that iodine is going to be the electrophile. And it says to one butene. So we'll have one butene starting out. And then we have oh, come on. Okay. Let's see. If you drop the mechanism, you have ICL, Pi bond bonds to I, I bonds to this carbon, and chlorine leaves in the first step. Then that goes, we have our halonium ion intermediate. Where iodide is gonna have a positive charge. And we have chloride ion present. Has four lone pairs. One of the lone pairs comes in, bonds to the more substituted carbon, and breaks this bond so that those lone pairs go to iodine. And that gives us our final product with a bond to iodine at carbon 1 and a bond to chlorine at carbon 2. So then I can make those changes in the window.
Would the atoms need to be bonded in that order? Specifically?
Chlorine has to be on the more substituted carbon and iodine has to be on the less substituted. So the nucleophilic group always adds to the more substituted carbon. If it's Markovnikov. Right. Oh, darn it, those extra groups that you sometimes accidentally add. Correct. Okay. Accidentally added water, one problem, accidentally added HCl, and the other one. It's okay. We got there in the end. Let's see. All right. What is the major product obtained from the hydroboration of one methyl cyclohexene? So first, I would draw one methyl cyclohexene. Which my pen would work. So we have cyclohexene with the double bond, and then the methyl group is on the double bond at carbon 1. And then hydroboration is oxidation puts on an alcohol group. And it occurs in an anti-Markovnikov way. So when I draw the product, I'll have a methyl group and an OH group on different carbons because the OH group is going to add to the less substituted carbon. Hmm. Please specify sterile chemistry of the product. So this time, they want to know that we know that we're going to have sin addition of the OH and the hydrogen that bond. And if we have sin addition, hydrogen and OH group have to add on the same wedge type. So we're gonna have to use our wedges and hatches. So you don't necessarily have to draw the hydrogen, but you do have to know that it adds on a solid wedge. And if hydrogen adds on a solid wedge, that means that the methyl group has to be on a hatched wedge. And we'll actually make two possible products. So we'll make the enantiomer where both OH and H add on the solid wedge, but we make a second enantiomer where they both add on a hatched wedge. And the methyl group has to be on the opposite type of wedge as those two atoms. So easy to fix. If my OH is on a solid wedge, then my methyl is on a hatched wedge. And I will also make one where the OH is on a hatched wedge. And the methyl is on a solid wedge. Please draw a single organic compound, but it makes two of them. Ah.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's fine. They just are not exact.
Would both of those products occur equally?
Yes.
Okay.
Relatively equally, maybe not exactly equally, but relatively equally. Okay. Next. The major product obtained from hydroboration oxidation of two methyl to butene. So we start with ah, my pen's working better. Or not, might not be working better. Methyl group. Double bond between carbon 2 and 3. Methyl group at carbon 2, and then hydroboration oxidation. So the carbon 2 is more substituted than carbon 3. So the alcohol group is going to go to carbon 3. And it's going to go through sin addition. So you have to make sure that the hydrogen and the OH add on the same wedge type again, and then the methyl group will be on the opposite wedge type. Although I'm not sure sterile chemistry will matter on this one. But it's better just to go ahead and do it. So. Methyl and correct. Okay. Anti-Markovnikov addition of OH. Which of the following carbocat ions would be expected to rearrange? So a carbocation will rearrange if it is adjacent to a more substituted carbon. So that's what we're looking for.
And the carbocation is shown by the positive charge?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would have this one because it's next to a more positive carbon. Not this one. No. Not this one. It's at the more substituted carbon already. This one. And these may occur in different orders for each of you. I can't promise what order they're in. I have no idea. Not this one because it's not immediately at the next carbon. This one is, and this one is not the more substituted. And not this one. See, what else? Is there more? So I'm gonna go ahead and click that. That. And then clear my drawings because when I move down. Okay, and then the last one is also a net. So just those two. Where the positive charge is one away from a tertiary carbon or one away from a quaternary carbon, then the positive charge can move in a carbocation rearrangement. Draw the product form when the compound shown below undergoes a reaction with HBR. So this is going to go through a carbocation intermediate. And the carbocation would be this molecule. And what did we just learn about having a positive charge next to a more substituted carbon? It can rearrange. So what will happen is we'll have a methyl shift. So we can take this methyl group and move it over there. And then we'll take the positive charge and move it over here. Okay? So that will be what reacts to create our final product. And it will look like this. So now I only have two methyl groups on this carbon, and there's a positive charge. And I have two methyl groups on this carbon. One that was already there and one that I added. And then the bromide ion will add to the positive carbon. So the final product will put bromine right there. Let's go ahead and move it down. So that would give us four carbons, methyl group, methyl group and bromine. A 1, 2 methyl shift. Okay. Which alkene and alcohol could be used as the starting materials in the acid-catalyzed addition reaction to prepare the following compound? So we're gonna start with an alkene and an alcohol, and we make this ether. So when we make an ether, we have an OR group added. And it, we can pick either side. The um the book will accept you making this group an OR group or this group an OR group. So we can pick either the left side of the oxygen or the right side of the oxygen group to be an OR group. And for me, I'm going to pick this side over here to be my OR group. So then I'll have that as my alcohol. And I'll make the four-carbon portion my alkene. And I'll put a double bond here so that this alcohol would bond to this carbon. It's a cis one, too. Right. Double bond and oxygen. Correct. Okay. So the other option would have been if you made the four-carbon group the alcohol. And that would have looked like you would have had an OH group over here. And the alkene group over here. So this alkene and this alcohol would give that same product. So either answer will be accepted by mastering. And I know that from experience because sometimes I do it this way and sometimes I do it the other way.
No. No. Neo. No. You're going to make me mad. That was my dad's hat. He pulled the hat off of my counter. A winter hat that used to be my dad's and is tearing it up. No. Give me a second, guys. No. You horrible puppy. That was my dad's. Are you destroyed my favorite jacket today?
Now you're destroying my hat, my winter hat. Okay. We're gonna have to get this chewing problem under control. Alright. Next problem. Draw the product form when the structure shown below undergoes a reaction with water and H2SO4. Say anything about. Any antimers, no. Well, we'll just have to find out if they want both or not. Actually, if I add H to the less substituted carbon. That'd be a carbon with two hydrogens, so that couldn't be an asymmetric center. And if I add OH to the more substituted carbon, I'd have two CH three groups. So that wouldn't be an asymmetric center either. So. We just have to make. The alcohol. With the OH on the more substituted carbon. Because there are, there's only one product. So we have four carbons with the methyl group. And then we'll also put an alcohol group. On that carbon. Let's see. Good, alright. Alright. Which compound would you expect to be hydrated more rapidly? So it will be hydrated more rapidly if it has a more stable carbocat ion. Both of these would have a carbocat ion on this tertiary carbon. But one of them has a halogen that withdraws electron density. And so. It would make the carbocat ion less stable. That means that the other alkene, the alkene without the halogen is more stable. And the carbocat ion of that alkene will react more quickly.
Come on.
Alright. No more chewing. Which alkene should be used to synthesize the following alkyl bromide? So to make this product and add only one bromine. We have corresponding product with only one bromine on our diagram. And it's done with HBR. And. Regardless, I could put the double bond between any of the carbons and have the same product. So it could be here, here, or here, so I just need to make. The corresponding alkene. So we start just by drawing three carbons with a methyl group. And then I could put the double bond on any of these locations. And when it reacts with HBR. The bromine will go to the more substituted carbon and the hydrogen to the less substituted carbon. So it will always give this product. In a reaction with HBR. Okay. Which alkene should be used to synthesize the following alkyl bromide? So in this one, we have two possibilities. Or I guess three possibilities. So I could have a double bond. Here. I could have a double bond. Here. Or I could have a double bond. Here. And whether I put the double bond on the purple, the orange, or the pink location. In a reaction with HBR, the more substituted carbon would be. The tertiary carbon and the bromine would go in the location shown. Computer says. So I can pick any one of those locations. I find that students are more comfortable with putting a double bond in the purple or the orange location. But the book will accept, or the mastering will accept a double bond at any of those three locations. So we have. An ethyl group. And for example, I could put the double bond here. And it would say that I am correct. Okay. Carbocat ions, so which is more stable, remember the more substituted carbon is the more stable. So we have tertiary versus secondary, it's going to be tertiary. And then we have the more complicated one of secondary and secondary, but this one has a halogen. And since the halogen withdraws electron density, this one is less stable. Because it's got a thief. Among them. Those thieving halogens. And then we have again, secondary versus tertiary, it's going to be the tertiary. And I think there's another carbocat ion problem here. Arranging them. Alright, so tertiary is more stable than. Secondary, which is more stable than primary. So we have three bonds to carbon, two bonds to carbon, and one bond to carbon. Then.
Electro negativity.
Considering the electro negativity, yes, so they're all primary. This one is not bonded to a thief. This thief is remorseful and not as bad as the ultimate thief. Chlorine. Chlorine steals from, you know, everybody, including babies. Chlorine will take, you know, lollipops from babies. And chlorine has a little bit more morals.
Respect back. I wish they would make the periodic table like that and describe all the electronic.
Oh yeah.
That would be great, but take time.
Would make it easier.
This one steals candy from children.
Alright. Is the reaction of two butine with HBR regio selective? So two butine. Draw it out. To be regio selective, it has to make more of one isomer than the other. And HBR is Markovnikov. So it would only be, make more of one isomer than the other if the carbons, one of the two carbons was more substituted. Is one of the two carbons more substituted?
Yes.
No. Secondary and secondary, so it cannot be regio selective. Because. It will add bromine to this carbon or this carbon in equal amounts and it all leads to one product.
Right.
Is it stereoselective? No. Just admit, admit. Okay. Is it stereospecific? No. Is the reaction of one butine. One butine. Regio selective, so does it make more of one isomer than the other? Does it put bromine on carbon two more than it puts it on carbon one? Yes. Is it stereoselective? Does it lead to only one stereoisomer? No. Is it stereospecific? No.
What is stereospecific again?
Like you have a stereoisomer and when that stereoisomer reacts, it leads to a specific. Stereo. A specific product which has asymmetric center. Where the enantiomer of that stereoisomer, when it reacts with the same reagent. Makes the enantiomer of what the other. One made. So, okay. So it's like saying you have the R isomer. And it makes a product that is SR. But the S isomer makes a product that is RS. Okay, so that's stereospecific. They don't make the same. Product. So each enantiomer makes a unique stereospecific product.
Okay. Makes more sense.
Makes more sense?
Yeah.
Okay. What stereoisomers are formed in the following reaction? I know, I know. Wouldn't you guys like to know, oh, I used the wrong ring?
Oops.
Five-membered ring.
Okay.
I need two of them.
Oh. Oh yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to put the methyl groups here. So this methyl group stays the same. And I'm going to add hydrogen sin through the double bond. Sin additions, sin addition, so I'll have one isomer where. They both add as, both of the hydrogens add as a solid wedge. And I'll have one isomer where both of the hydrogens add as a hatched wedge. And that will give me my two stereoisomers, what? Hey, I did this earlier and it said I was right. Oh, but it might only want one of the two, although it says isomers.
Yeah.
Nope, nope, it did want both. I did this in the other class and it said I was right. What am I doing wrong? Can't think of anything that I'm doing wrong, okay. Yeah. Can I think of anything that I am doing wrong? No, not really. Pretty confident about this. Sometimes mastering is like really picky about how you draw it. What if I just. And then. Put the group. On this side. And I say that the hydrogens both add on a solid wedge or. The hydrogens both add on a hatched wedge. Okay. Yeah, you know. It's picky. Yeah, it's picky.
It's basically the same thing.
I know, I know, I know, I know it's basically the same thing, I know. It's just.
Great, how did you turn the molecule around? I'm still trying to figure that out.
Now, just take the box. And highlight it. So push the select thing and then. Outside of the molecule. Press your right, your left click and don't release it and then drag. Out until you have a square surrounding them. Then click on the blue circle and rotate.
Okay, well. Okay, it didn't like that.
Do you want to, do you want to share your screen?
Sure.
Let me, let me make it a possible for you to share.
I think I drew mine lopsided, so it doesn't. Yeah, hydrogens need to go.
Being picky.
Yes. Or I may have just like completely drawn it wrong.
Okay. All participants, all participants, so if you want to share your screen, you can, I made it possible.
Okay.
Comment.
Yes.
No pressure.
Dealing with a lot of pressure, it's good.
Okay.
Okay. Does that work? Okay.
Yeah. So put, put the methyl group on the other side of the solid wedge. Because that's what it didn't like about my drawing. So move the, move the. The straight line, the straight line methyl group. To the carbon that's on the other side of the solid wedge.
Okay.
So just erase.
This side.
Yeah.
Okay, and then. Does it matter which way the hydrogens go?
I don't think it will matter which way they're going.
Okay, so that one.
As long as they're both on the hatched. And then move it for the other molecule too.
Okay. Okay. There's that, and that's a solid wedge?
Yes.
Okay, for these two.
And then you have one more CH4 to delete.
Oh, I see, it snuck itself in there.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's gone, okay. See if that's.
There you go.
There we go.
Picky, 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 okay.
Very nice.
Okay. Alright, I'll go back to sharing now.
Alright.
Okay.
Yay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Are they enantiomers or diastereomers? Well, one asymmetric center stays the same. And the other asymmetric center changes, so that is the definition of.
Yeah.
Diastereomers.
Diastere, I cannot see. So they're just talking about those two molecules, not the ones we just drew? Or are they supposed to be the same thing?
These are the same thing. Yep. Same thing.
What? No, but like the. No, but like this solid wedge and a hatched wedge. We, like, all of ours had either a hatched wedged or a solid wed, solid wedge.
I know.
Oh.
It's weird. I can't explain it. Because, um, so see our hydrogens are here and here, but they're showing the hydrogens on the same carbon as the methyl group. So there's one molecule where the methyl group and the hydrogen are on the different wedge type and one where they're on the same wedge type. So different wedge type, same wedge type. And then the other hydrogen that is sin to the hydrogen that we add is on the methyl group, but they're not showing that specific bond. They just wrote it as H three. Alright, which stereoisomer is formed in greater yield? The one where the addition is less less sterically hindered so that it is adding on the opposite side of the molecule as the methyl group. So highlight, push Command C or Control C depending on what type of uh, computer you have, Command C for Apple or yeah, and Control C for uh, Windows.
How did you figure out that that was the greater yield?
What?
How did you figure out that that one was the greater?
Hydrogens add on the opposite side as the methyl group, so it's less sterically hindered approaching the double bond on the other side from the methyl group. Because if the hydrogens add from the same side as the methyl group, then they'll be steric, um, clashing with the methyl.
Right, yeah. Wait, but like wouldn't, doesn't the solid wedge also have something similar? Isn't it kind of similar? Isn't the salt, the ones, the, um, the comp, the drawing with the hexagon with the solid wedge on hydrogens isn't, doesn't it look similar to that one as well?
So now, when these hydrogens are coming out towards us, so they're on the same side as the methyl group.
Yeah.
And so when they add, there is, um, their electron clouds between the hydrogens and the methyl group are closer together. And that's steric hindrance. And this one, you know, they look the same distance way it's drawn, but they're actually pointing into like behind the computer screen, so they're further from the methyl group.
Right, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, that makes sense, I'm so sorry, that was a dumb question.
No, it was just, uh, remembering spatial arrangement question. Like, sometimes we have to picture it in three dimensional space. Or build the molecule if you have to. Okay. Draw the product formed when the compound chumbolo undergoes a reaction in H B R and C H two C L two. So C H two C L two is just a solvent, it's unreactive, it has no, no effect on the reaction, it's just a solvent. So I don't really care about that. All I care about is H B R. And I know H adds the less substituted carbon.
Less substituted.
And bromine adds to the more substituted carbon. And the double bond goes away.
Oh, wait. Oh, that's what I did wrong. What I did, um, was that I switched the bromine and the hydrogens together where they were.
Hmm, yeah. Don't do that. Gotta remember.
The order of substitution, when something is Markovnikov addition. Yeah. I forget, just sometimes.
Methyl and bromine. Whoops. So then, I don't even have to put in the hydrogen, right? So all I have to do is add the bromine. Then push submit. And I'm done. Markovnikov addition to get across the C C double bond. And that's the last question, guys.
Thanks for going over it with us, Dr. Millsap. This was, well, although I wasn't there for most of it, I know that it's being recorded, but.
Yeah, but we recorded it.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna watch.
Now you can go back and watch the other parts.
Would you mind going over the first problem real quick again, or should I just wait on that?
Number one?
Yeah. If that's okay. Number one. And then, I know we've been like discussing in lecture about doing the mechanisms and drawing mechanisms like on the exam, but I didn't see any of those kind of questions for the homework. Mm-hmm. So I don't know.
I know. I couldn't find one. Um, I can try and find one. So the question number one, it says, how do we make a molecule that has a halogen and a hydroxyl group? If you go over to your reaction diagram, there's one molecule that has a halogen and a hydroxyl group and the reagents are B R two and H two O for that one. So if it's chlorine and O H, it's gonna be C L two and H two O. So it has to be the middle one.
Where, is that in chapter six PowerPoint?
Yep, it's the very last slide.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So you can see how useful it is to have it open with the homework.
Mm-hmm.
My side.
Yeah. It's actually really helpful.
Okay. Um, methyl group and a hydroxyl group, starting with this alkene. So the hydroxyl group is going on to the less substituted carbon. And that is hydroboration, anti Markovnikov addition, hydroboration.
Yeah. Hmm.
And that's the end of problem one.
Okay. I see.
Okay. Um, no, I was gonna, somebody asked me, oh, can I find a mechanism problem? I don't know if I can. Let's see.
I'm not familiar with how to use that software, like as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, it's a tricky, it's tricky to do the mechanism too, by the way.
Yeah. Especially for this chapter.
Tools. Item library. Chapter six.
Are we gonna be using a lot more mechanisms for chapter seven, eight, and nine? Are we going to be?
We are going to go over the mechanism whenever it is useful to go over the mechanism. So, and then on the homework for chapter seven, eight, and nine, there are mechanism problems that are part of the homework.
Okay. Okay.
Well, not the test bank.
Oh, no. We were so close, Elizabeth. Very, very close.
Alright. Mechanism problem, electrophilic addition to alkenes. Look at that.
Wow.
Wait, did they change the window? Oh my goodness. Uh-oh, okay. This looks different than I'm used to. They must have updated the software.
Oh, no.
Dun, dun, dun. Dun, dun, dun. Okay.
This in my head.
Oh, well. This is fun though. Um, okay, so we're starting with this alkene. It says, draw a mechanism for the following reaction. So I'm gonna have to start by drawing the starting material. Which has a box. Oh, I like the box.
Super fancy.
Yes.
Symmetrical.
Move down here. Okay. And the box is well, that's fine, okay, has a methyl group over here and this and this. Okay. So, and then it reacts with.
Bromine. Hydrogen, hi, hydrogen and bromine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so um, the pi bond will bond to the hydrogen. And it's so annoying. The arrow.
It does that.
Does that, okay. So, let me show you that again. I, this is the two electron arrow, there are two dots. I click on the pi bond and I drag it until it circles the hydrogen atom and then I let it go. Okay. Then the bond between hydrogen and bromine breaks and those electrons go to the bromine. That arrow's a little bit better.
Yeah.
Um, right. So this is where your, um, software gets weird. Put a box around it. I know, it's annoying. Just accept. Arrow over here.
That looks like.
Another box. Ow, 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 ow. My foot is giving me pain. Okay. You know what, I'm gonna select this, which Control C and Control V. Right next to here. Okay. So this arrow goes to this box. So the next step is that I have
Whoa. Oh, copy and paste.
This molecule with positive charge at this carbon. Okay. Four membered rings are not stable. No, no, no.
Nope. Not stable.
So that ring is going to have a shift. And now I have a five membered ring with a positive charge at this carbon. So then put in a new box. This is how they used to make us do the mechanism, so I don't know if they still require boxes or not. And I'm just not gonna risk it. Alright, so now I have a five membered ring with a methyl group over here. And then one, two, this carbon is now bonded to this car, three, four. So positive charge right here. And one, two, three. One, two, three. Two methyl groups right here. Yep.
So it just increases the, like, cyclic structure? Like, it added to? I'm trying to. I don't know.
Okay, so now oh, did I draw that wrong? I did. I have another bond right here. It's an ethyl group. Ethyl group. Okay. So then what happens is we have a methyl shift. So now electron arrows, methyl group with its electrons moves over here. Gotta draw that product now. Doesn't this seem so fun? Aren't you so ready for me to put this on the test?
Well, maybe not this next test.
There is a mechanism problem on this next test.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And it does undergo a carbocation rearrangement, it's just not as bad as this.
Oh, I've been rewatching all the lecture videos. So far that's been helpful.
Okay. So now we're gonna start to look a little bit more like the product that they showed us. We have methyl group, methyl group, ethyl group. And now the positive charge is over here because that's where the methyl group moved from. Even though it's not super visible, that is a positive charge right there. Okay. So now, look, I have methyl, ethyl, methyl, right? It matches. Okay, now I'm gonna have to, I don't know, somehow zoom out or something. Uh, minus, yes, exactly.
Are you gonna add the bromine in there?
Yeah, just, 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 we gotta add another box. Yeah. I know, you guys are just loving the boxes, right? Wait, okay. Select. Move this over here. Okay. I just need more room. Nope, still not small enough, okay, minus. Move over here, okay. So now.
Are we going to need to add the addition sign?
This box. Ooh, and you know, I'm just gonna copy this whole thing. Say Control C, Control V. And then put, I, I added an addition sign.
Okay.
It's just, it's just not visible because it's so tiny. But it was there. I'm pretty sure. It might have disappeared. Okay. But it's on this carbon. Hey, it also got rid of my ethyl group. What? That's an ethyl group. Okay. Alright. So then finally, 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 finally.
Finally.
That's right, final. Our bromide ion will add to the last carbocation that we made right there. So that we make the final product with bromine. Yay. Oh, gotta connect my box.
Arrow.
This box goes to this box. Okay.
Wow.
Let's see what it says. What? What's that about? In the first box, make sure a dotted line connects the two atoms forming a bond. If the internal carbon and. Curved arrow. Okay. Let's try this. I'm gonna place. Arrow. And then, I'll just draw it again. I bond to the hydrogen, it connected. I'm gonna click on the A, 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 A. Click on that. Okay. Yeah. Now it says I'm right. You know? But hey, so that's the thing. Now, on the test question, all the boxes, I believe, are drawn for you. And it has the first one and the last one um, already have things in them, and then you have to add whatever you need to add to make the reaction happen. And then you'll have to fill out the other boxes.
Would it happen to be a reaction from the chapter six that we went over?
Um, it is.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, files. Chemistry one files. Exam study guides. See. Exam two, fall 2020. Where is it? Sam two guide. This one. It looks like this. If you can do this problem, then you can do the one on the exam. And it gives you, that you start with an alkene and H3O plus, and the double bond is next to a more substituted carbon. And in the final product, the OH group is on the more substituted carbon and not on one of the double bond carbons. And one of the methyl groups has moved, so it had to have a methyl shift. So you have to fill in the intervening boxes with the correct information. And use the software appropriately to move electron arrows, so pi bond bonds hydrogen, the bond between hydrogen and oxygen breaks. Now we have, um, a positive charge at this carbon that's next to the more substituted carbon, then the methyl group. And you draw the, you draw the new carbocation over here. Then you draw an electron arrow from the methyl group that moves to the positive carbon. Then you draw the product of the methyl group moving with the positive charge now, or that methyl group used to be. And then, the OH group can add, so you have H2O and you have an arrow going from the oxygen of H2O to the positive carbon. And, um, then you draw the product of that, where you've got the H2O bonded at that carbon. And that it has to be deprotonated in order to get to just an OH group, so you have another molecule of H2O in the box that you have to add, and then you have to draw an arrow from that molecule of H2O to the extra hydrogen on the oxygen that's bonded to the alkene. And then you have to break the, that oxygen's bond to the hydrogen that is being taken by the water. Are you confused yet?
Very much so, but.
A little bit, but, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So you guys, practice drawing that out.
Okay.
Because essentially, by giving you this, I am telling you what the problem is on the test.
Okay.
I mean, it looks a little bit different, but not that much different. The starting materials. Tiny bit different, that's it.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, that is all.
Awesome.
And it is the alcohol one, and it's not this other one where it says, use the same starting material with Br2 and H2O. Or use the same starting material with Br2 and CHCl2. No, I'm just gonna go ahead and tell you that it's this acid catalyzed hydration one.
Okay.
Am I, I'm nice, right?
You're so nice.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'm gonna rescue my puppy from puppy jail.
Okay.
Puppy jail.
Hopefully he's calmed down enough to stop chewing on things.
Neo is really great. I love Neo.
Yeah, can he come and stay with you and chew on your stuff?
Sure, why not?
Okay, alright, so, um, this video, it usually takes Panopto at least thirty minutes to process.
Okay.
Um, and then it'll be available as a Panopto video.
Okay.
And remember, I gave both classes permission to access the files for the other class. So you probably just have to go to your email to click on the link so that you can access the files for the other class.
Oh, okay.
Right? Remember getting those weird emails? You now have permission to blah, blah.
Yes.
Oh, two, or section oh, one, and you're like, why is she giving me permission for that?
Yeah, I was confused.
Maybe it'll be helpful. Now it's helpful.
It's very helpful. It's helpful for me as an ADEM student.
Hmm.
Okay, alright, so I'll say goodnight. And we'll have a study session for the test material. Um, tomorrow night. Sometime tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night? When is tomorrow? Friday?
Yeah, cuz the test is gonna be open from Saturday until Tuesday.
Okay. Is it gonna be recorded?
The study session for the test?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you so much, Dr. Millsap. Appreciate you taking your time.
So you know, just look for your, look for a Canvas email, and it might, it might be like tonight, where I just send it a couple of minutes before I start the study session. But you'll get an email whenever I'm able to start the study session, I'll send an email with a link. Okay?
That works.
Alright. Happy Halloween. Goodnight.
Goodnight.